Good evening. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Licensing Board of the City of West Bend. It is Monday, September 9th, 2024. We recognize a quorum of our Licensing Board here tonight. Our first item of business is the Licensing Board regular meeting minutes from August 19th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butch Look. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Three items of business tonight, the first one being New Beginnings Massage Therapy LLC, new massage license.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butch Look and Zingshaim. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Dandelion Massage Therapy, a new massage license.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butch Look. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And our last item is Wellwith Massage LLC, a new massage license.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butch Look and Zingshaim. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, and the Licensing Board is adjourned.
I would like to call the order, the Board of Public Works. We have four items on the agenda. Item number one, approval of the minutes from August 19th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Schulte and Alderman Berquist. Any corrections? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, award contract 24-13 Walnut Street Storm Sewer Connection. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is to award a contract to relay storm sewer along Walnut Street. This is an issue that surfaced when we were doing the reconstruction of Main Street last year, and the resolution requires an upgrade of the existing storm sewer. So, on top of the storm sewer, during the design discussions, we talked about the current garbage collection area, to move it to a trash enclosure within the parking lot that's along Walnut Street there at the southwest corner, and upgrading the area to concrete where we right now have weeds and brushes that are growing there. So, we bid the contract, and we received one bid from BMC listed on the memo. BMC Construction has done work within the city, so they are capable of performing this work under this contract. The cost estimate that we had is a little lower than their bid, but that can be explained by several items that are smaller quantities when we compare to larger quantities on contract. The unit price can get higher, so there's no surprise there. And so therefore, we recommend to award the contract in the amount of $145,309.50 to BMC at the unit prices specified in their bid, and an allocation of about 5.9%, not to exceed a total allocation of $154,000 for this contract.
Do we motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Mary Beth, who's the second?
Yeah, Mark was.
Oh, okay. Any questions for? Any questions for?
Max.
There are no questions? I do have a question. I'm glad to see that that's taken care of with the dumpsters there. A couple of months ago, I looked at that, and I'm just like, when are we, or what can we do, or how can we make that corner look a little better? And I'm happy to see this is taken care of now. It's going to make that area look a lot neater, being seen downtown is up to snuff now, and that's just going to make it look that much better entering in the south side. So, thanks, Max.
Thank you.
All right. Item number two, we need to, yeah, we need to vote. Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number three, Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, W24-02 covers.
Thank you. This item is a traditional stormwater maintenance agreement that the city enters into with property owners whenever they get a development or redevelopment of their property, and they are issued a stormwater management permit. They have to provide stormwater management facilities to handle the stormwater on their property, and we enter in an agreement with them in order to ensure that those facilities will be built per plan and function in the future as intended. So, this is another of this agreement. This one is for covers. They are adding a double drive-through and additional parking to their site, and this agreement keeps us in compliance with our MS4 permit with the NR. So, we recommend approval of the agreement.
Motion. But, Alderman Zingshaim?
Second.
Okay. Any questions for Max on that? There are none? We have motion to four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, Forge Place Roadway Reimbursement Agreement, We Energies Electric. Max?
Thank you again. Forge Place was reconstructed, installed in the past few years as part of the plan to develop that industrial park on the south side of the city. Now that we installed those road and underground facilities, we do have companies that come and start getting into the park, and this agreement with We Energies is to bring an electric line along Forge Place in order to provide electricity for the parcels that are along that road. Utility companies have the right to install their facilities within the road right-ofways. Here, they will install underground lines, and because it's not the traditional aerial lines, they're asking for an agreement in case the city would want to move those facilities in the future so they can get reimbursed for the cost of moving those facilities. We don't anticipate those facilities being moved anytime soon, for decades probably. They are going to be placed in the right-ofway towards the right-ofway line. We don't anticipate any road reconstruction or road expansion for that, no road. So, we recommend approval of the agreement with We Energies.
Okay. We have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen? And second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Zingshaim. Any questions for Max?
I just have one question for Max.
Okay.
Is this a standard type of an agreement that we would have with a utility like We Energies?
So, for underground utilities, that is something that the city has done in the past. We did it on Forest Avenue when they had to put underground facilities before the hotel and the other development to the south. We've done it on River Road when they had to bring the utilities out from Jackson all the way to where Milwaukee Tools is right now. There's another one, I think it's along Indiana. So, it's not something unusual for the city.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Alderman Sparts, you had your.
Pretty much same question.
Okay. Any more questions? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn as Chair.
I call to order a meeting of the Finance Committee. We have three items on the agenda this evening. The first is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on August 19th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Schmidt and Alderman Zingshaim. Any corrections, additions, deletions? Otherwise, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. The second item on our agenda is an implementation of paid time off PTO policy. Welcome, Jess.
Hi. All right. I'm going to pull up a couple of documents for you and for you also, Mark. One moment. Mark, are you able to see my screen? Looks like it's not.
Yeah.
All right.
Wait. Excuse me.
Looks like it's not.
I've got the document in the packet in front of me.
Okay. Well, great. Well, then we'll just get going and talk through it there. All right.
It just came up.
Perfect. Thanks, Mark. Great. Good evening. I'm here tonight to present the paid time off policy to you, and thought we could start with a little bit of a history on how we've gotten to this point before talking through what PTO is. First, the PTO policy was recommended to the City of West Bend to implement as part of the McGrath Compensation Study that was done in 2021 and implemented in 2022. Like programs are similar in our municipality world and also in the public and nonprofit sector, and the city currently has a time off policy that consists of sick time, vacation time, paid compensation or comp time, holiday time, flex time. It's kind of a unique system. So, this would be a little bit more of a simplified system. So, with that recommendation, that was several years ago, we implemented other things first, and then most recently did an employee-wide survey back in the fall of 2023 or 2024, where we heard from our staff pretty loud and clear that the things that were most important to them were improving our benefits, specifically time off, and then also their compensation. So, with that information and feedback, we really took it seriously and explored what it would take to implement paid time off. So, you'll see before you tonight our proposed policy. I printed off this document of frequently asked questions for you to review, but I'm going to walk through them so that we can talk through it and answer any questions that you may have. So, paid time off is the combination of what we currently have as a traditional sick and vacation accrual time. It can be used for any reason, sick time, vacation, wellness. It is a similar system in that you still need department approval in order to take time off. You know, and you're able to, you know, request it online. Employees will be able to see what they have accrued for each year, but it's meant to be more flexible, and it is. So, what's going to happen for the implementation? Employees currently are accruing their vacation time for next year. It's kind of a little bit odd to think through that I'm accruing time for next year, and by January 1st, I'll have all of my year. So, what we need to do to sort of get to a point where employees are accruing time at more of like a live, more live, is to actually implement a paid time off payout of time and then a start of a deposit of time so that people who are employed here will have time in their deposited bank to start, as well as start accruing live. We'll talk through that a little bit more in a second here. Employees are also accruing sick time right now, and sick time can only be used when you're sick. So, unlike PTO where you'll be able to use time for, you know, sick or vacation, the time that's accrued now, either it's six or four hours, depending on an employee's tenure here, can only be used for that. So, a lot of employees have sick banks that are at their maximum or at a large amount because they're not sick very often, which is wonderful. They can also use that time for FMLA and other purposes. Our employees will not be losing the sick time that they have already earned. That sick time bank is going to be rolled into what's called an extended leave bank. That starts on January 1st of 2025. So, whatever an employee has right now who's currently here and eligible for this program has on December 31st will get rolled into the ELB. An ELB bank can be used essentially the same way as the sick time today, for sick purposes, for illness, injury, FMLA, and it will be a one-time sort of deposit of funds into this bank. And we will not be adding to it moving forward because instead, employees will be accruing through PTO. The ELB, similar to how our sick time is today, is only paid out when an employee retires after 10 years of working for the City of West Bend and going on immediate annuity, and it's paid out at 50%. So, they can get up to a maximum of 960 hours, and if they meet those other criteria, can get paid half of that time upon their retirement. Otherwise, that time is lost if they choose to leave for other circumstances or are not retiring with that amount of time. So, PTO, which is a greater benefit in that way, is something that employees are earning and will be paid out 100% if they choose to leave or retire. That time is theirs, and 100% is paid out. Their ELB will act the same and be the 50% payout upon 10 years of time here and immediate annuity upon retirement. So, I'm kind of rolling through this fast. If you have any questions, please stop me. You can see all of that here. So, employees are going to be, what we're presenting tonight is our PTO policy, and within that document, the only difference between really the frequently asked questions is a lot more detail about how employees accrue time, how it can be used, and then there's a couple of charts within the policy document that's in your packet to show the accrual rates. The accrual rates are based on their years of service, their salary grade, and the amount of hours that they work per week for the City of West Bend. So, many of our employees are full-time. They're at the top of each of those sort of years of service sections on those charts. Starting at, in mid-December is when we're proposing to do the payout of the time that's already been accrued for 2025, and we're proposing paying out half of what employees have already earned for 2025 on that date, and then depositing the other half of time into their bank right away on January 1st to be used. So, if somebody had a vacation they were planning in January, they would have time that's in there, and they would begin to accrue the entire year of January, or of 2025. So, they'll get half of the year basically of their former vacation time paid and deposited, and then accrue the entire 2025 year. What questions can I answer for you?
Alderman Butch Look.
Yeah, my question is, with the sick time that the employees occurred, what happens if someone gets really sick?
Yeah.
And they used all their current leave or time? Can other employees volunteer some of their sick hours to help that employee since, to get him back on his feet and volunteer some of their current leave to that individual?
So, that's not really a practice that we do today. The employee would first have the option of using their ELB bank, all their sick time that they may have.
Yep.
They could also utilize their PTO for that time and could also explore short-term disability. And then our new insurance or income continuation insurance plan that you just passed the last meeting, so after 30 days of, so that would likely be in a case of, like a long-term disability, they would be able to get paid up to 75% of their annual salary with that program.
Okay. So, in other words, this path that we just passed last council took care of it because prior to when I was working, we were able to do that at that time for an individual, and that has changed. And of course, obviously, I've been gone for quite a few years, so things do change. All right. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Our current program doesn't have a donor component to it, and that was around at one time in West Bend.
At one time it did.
It's not any longer. Thank you for that clarification, Jay. Any other questions for Jess on this topic? Alderman Sparts?
So, if I'm working today, I've heard from some of the senior employees, is it going on a one-to-one conversion? If I've got 20 years in, am I getting the same time today as, or next week as I'm getting, let's say next year, as I'm getting now? So, if I have, how many hours of max do I, can I make this year as opposed to next year for the senior employees?
That's a great question. There's actually a number of answers for that. Let's talk about max. One thing that's unique about this program that doesn't exist today is the rollover of your time. So, if you don't take your vacation time today, you lose your time unless it's approved because of certain circumstances that are rare. Now, PTO, employees will be able to roll their time over into a higher maximum account than they, or number than they would have before, and it's all in the chart, if you can see. That means that if they had unused vacation at the end of the year, it can roll into 2026 and continue to add up until they hit their maximum there. The program is not a perfect apples-to-apples comparison because it now is combining flexible time, vacation time, and sick time into PTO, and then eliminating like these separate banks of time that could be only used for certain purposes. So, if you're looking at, you know, a sick time comparison to the PTO time, it may look different, but employees no doubt will have more time next year available to them than they would if we continued on today's plan. And that's every employee because they will get the deposit of time starting January 1st, which is half of what their vacation is now, and accrue the entire year of next year. So, I don't know if that helps answer that question, but that's a significant increase in time available for the whole year.
So, the way you're saying is actually they're going to, are they going to gain a couple hours next year just because of the rollover? What about the year after that, then it stays at that level from next year?
Yeah. So, they will begin accruing at the rate that's listed in the document here. So...
Jack, can I just jump in with maybe an example? You asked about a tenured employee. So, if somebody is currently receiving 200 hours...
If I understand it, this applies only to the non-represented employees.
That's correct. Our dispatch and clerical are included in this for PD, but not otherwise represented. So... Sorry, Jay is speaking.
So, the example of the tenured employee that might have five weeks vacation or 200 hours, where our system currently works is you earn, as Jess shared with you, all you earn your time in 2024 to be used in 2025. So, that 200 hours is going to, that you're earning, that a tenured employee is earning in '24 will be split in 2025. 100 hours starting in their bank, 1-1 of 2025. So, they'll start the year with 100 hours, and then the remaining 100 hours, they'll be paid out for. That's the resolution part of your potential action tonight to make employees whole. And then beginning in one, at 1-1 of 2028, that tenured employee is going to start accruing time, and this is where Jess mentioned, not apples and apples, it's PTO time is not sick leave time. So, it's not 100% one-to-one comparison of time between the two. But the employee will receive, that tenured employee will receive an additional 280 hours of PTO time in 2025, in addition to the 100 hours that started in their bank. So, a total of 380 hours, and that's where Jess mentioned, that it'll be way more time than what the employee would have received in any one given year. And then after that was the follow-up question you asked about the rollover time, that that time is allowed. Let's say that the employee used 80 hours of that time throughout the year and was, in addition to the 100 that they might have used, they still have 200 hours left in their bank. So, they've used 180 hours, and they still have 200 hours. They can start the new year of 1-1 '26 with that 200 hours of time. And that, I think the other thing that is a real apple and orange, in my opinion, difference between the time is if you left as a tenured employee, not on immediate annuity or retired as a longtime employee that started before 2012, your sick leave, if you just resigned from the city, your sick leave bank, even if it's 960 hours, our max, just goes away. The PTO time is 100% paid out. So, it's really tough to answer your question, or, and Jess and I made these presentations to all the departments. We certainly make ourselves available to answer any individual questions that people have, in addition to our HR department, Michelle and Jennifer, and the respective department heads for our organization can answer them as well. But it's a, it's a different way of viewing time off and one that just makes us way more competitive for retention and recruitment. Really excited to bring this to the organization, something that we've been working on for a long time within the city.
It's also, I think, important that if you have a bank of sick days, that bank of sick days you get to keep going forward. And so, not only are you going to get half of what you've already accrued and a payout for the other half and start accruing right away, if you get sick, you've got a bank of sick days over here as well that you've already accrued in the past that you're going to, you're going to be able to use.
Just, I think I know the answer is, but the full-time equivalent column?
Yep.
When we, we've got, for instance, .50, that's a halftime person, that's a 20-hour person.
Yep. And one thing I didn't note is the 10 holidays. They still have 10 holidays, just their regular holiday pay.
Any additional questions for Jess?
Yes, please. Looking at the salary grades there on, I think, what page? 2A, where it has the list, the chart? It says that the last column there in the main table is maximum hours in the bank.
Yep. So, that means like in 2026, if you start January 1st and you had time in the bank that you rolled into the next year, you could only accrue up to that number. So, no one's going to be at their max right away, which is intentional. We don't want people to be like starting off and maxed out. We want you to have something to start with and then build up, and you can continue to use your time and max up to those numbers. So, that amount of time can be in your account at any time. If you hit that number, then you'll stop accruing until you go below it and then can add back up.
Right. So, how does, when you use sick leave, which you may, like the current employee now has been accumulating because they haven't called in sick, they may have a pretty substantial bank, and I know they get paid out, and I know it gets put into an ELB.
Yep.
But say 2026, okay? If the, the maximum of the bank can only go to 420.
So, that's the PTO bank. Yep. That's the PTO bank, but they have, in addition to the PTO bank, the ELB bank. So, that's separate. That sick time stays separate.
Okay. ELB, according to you, is a one-time thing for 2024.
One time. Yep. It's a one-time deposit of what you end this year with sick time-wise. So, some new employees may have eight hours, and some more tenured employees may have 900 hours.
Correct.
It will be a one-time deposit of sick time in the ELB bank that we don't add to again, but employees can use or they can choose not to use.
Right.
PTO will be the numbers on this chart. This will be the maximum numbers of PTO time that you can accumulate as well.
Do you envision the employee gaining that maximum within a half a year after, you know, say if they don't take anything the first year, and within the six months, they could have that taken care, or filled up again to meet the maximum and then not incur any sick, you know, credit for sick leave?
It's possible. Yep. If they want to not take any time off or they don't get sick and they don't choose to take any time, then, yep, they could definitely hit their maximum.
And if they've met the maximum of that bank, then...
Yep.
Whatever they may have occurred, accrued, will go away.
Which is the case now with our sick bank. Some employees have gotten to their maximum amounts, and they just lose time.
But that, yeah, that cap is like 960 hours though.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. This has been communicated to everybody, and everybody is...
It has. We have met with department heads and individual departments, individual employees, and we've been working on this for the last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any additional questions? Then as, as a matter of process, Ian, do we need to take a motion on this to adopt this into the handbook?
Yeah. So, it's, yeah. So, Finance Committee is approving the resolution.
Well, that's my question. Is it, is it the resolution or the implementation, or are they combined one or the other, or combined as one?
Yeah. It's, it's basically one action.
Okay.
It's the, the resolution is adding it to the employee, or where you're going to implement it in the employee handbook and authorizing that payout.
Okay. Sounds good. So, then really, we're talking about agenda items two and three.
Yes.
At the current. In that case, I'll then ask the question, are there any questions regarding the resolution and the payout? There being none, I will entertain a motion to implement, to adopt the paid time off policy and...
Yeah. So, the, if you look at the resolution, it states that it's authorizing the implementation of PTO and the appropriation of the funds necessary for the, you know, for the implementation process. So, by implementing, you are both authorizing the 50/50. So by implementing, you are both authorizing the 50-50, you know, payout split and adding it to the program, implementing the program as of next, as of January 1st in the employee handbook.
Perfect. Okay. Then can I entertain a motion to approve the appropriation of funds for the implementation of paid time off PTO?
Are we taking it in two pieces?
We are not.
It's a single resolution.
Implement, one, one piece. The implementation of PTO and the resolution.
Okay. Never mind.
If no one else will move, I will move to accept it and implement it. Is there a second?
Matt has made a motion.
Was that a second mark? Sorry.
Yes.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion on this topic? Otherwise, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as chair.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. It is Monday, September 9th, 2024. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting. Notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Clerk, can I please confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We recognize the quorum of our full Common Council here tonight. Mark, it is great to see you and see that you are doing well. And I wouldn't normally address personal health issues, but it was on the front page of the paper on Saturday. And so a lot of people in the community know what happened to you and we've been thinking about you and praying for you and glad to see that you are doing well and recovering. All right. Our first item of business is the approval of our regular meeting minutes from August 19th, 2024. Thank you, Alderwoman Sizer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Great. Thank you. Chief Dearing, a couple of oaths of office for lieutenant and sergeant tonight.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you for allowing us the time to celebrate some really positive career advancements for two of our members. It struck me as I was preparing that there's a correlation to parenthood that we're gonna celebrate tonight. Most of us have experienced that in the room and remember those carefree days when all we really had to care about was ourselves. Those were good times. A promotion to a police supervisor is much the same as you're giving up a lot of that carefree times to take on the great responsibility of parenting leadership amongst our department. And tonight, we're gonna celebrate two officers of our department and our city who have agreed to take on that pretty tremendous responsibility. We identify our supervisors at the Police Department based on a couple of things. One thing we like to talk about is that you are applying for whatever position you are going for the very day you are hired. And that is certainly something that we see in the two individuals we'll celebrate tonight. They've demonstrated a belief in our mission, our mission to protect and serve. To protect and serve the community, to protect and serve the city's interest, the Police Department, but more importantly, to protect and serve our team. I can't be more proud to introduce these two to you tonight. Finally, these two have also showed and demonstrated an alignment to our leadership culture in the West Bend Police Department. Our commitment to a healthy and engaged workforce, making sure that we understand that every employee is valued, but we also have expectations, and these two gentlemen exemplify that tonight. We've already celebrated them internally. Lieutenant Kohler was promoted on July 21st. Sergeant Garcia was promoted on August 18th. We've celebrated that internally. They've taken their share of ribbing, the backslaps, and we've put them to work. And they've been working hard. Tonight, we'd like to celebrate their promotion with their families, with you, the elected body, with our city leaders, but most importantly, with our community. And in that spirit, I'd like to ask them to take their pledge and their oath of office in front of that community. So we'll start with Lieutenant Kohler. Step forward, please.
Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Chad Kohler.
Having been appointed
Having been appointed.
As Lieutenant of Police.
As Lieutenant of Police.
In the City of West Bend, Washington County.
In the City of West Bend, Washington County.
Swear that I will support
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge, discharge the duties
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of said office
Of said office.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Please don't get out of here without at least a couple words. So Chad joined our department in 2007, spent 13 very proud years as a police officer. Something that you and I share in common. You beat me. I spent a decade as a police officer and I would never give those days back. Made a difference on many levels as a field training officer, a member of our special response team, a very valued and respected field training officer. Something you're gonna hear with both of these officers that they put them towards their path of making a significant difference. More importantly, just a solid team member of West Bend Police. Chad has a fantastic reputation for a number of reasons. One, three, oh, he is a decent man. He's a decent man. Not bad right there. Two, we love Chad's work ethic. Chad has told us we should scrap all of our assessment programs that we do to hire new people and give them a farm task and see how well they can move hay, dig rocks, pick rocks, plant. And that will show us everything we need to know because it's hard work. We can teach them the best attributes, not skills. And finally, what I'm most proud of Chad for is his candor. Chad's strategic goal for his shift this past year is to be an adult and be an adult with our team members and work through, through really respectful but direct conversations when we're having interpersonal conflict. Any of you that work in an organization, oh, there's always interpersonal conflict. Chad is committed to improving our team so we can function more than that. And I'm so proud to be a partner. As is our tradition, it doesn't pay for, the guy sits in the corner to pin the badge on. That's meaningless. What's meaningful tonight is his wife and children to pin on his badge. Love the bowtie techs. And that symbolizes, and we'll move outside of the TV in a minute, PIO. That symbolizes the commitment that it takes to be a good police officer and certainly a good supervisor. I've charged all the families when we've hired new officers, and I'll charge you again. It's your duty to make sure he stays a whole person. He's a better police officer when he's a whole person. Our job can be very consuming and very focused on just the job, and he needs to be more than in this beautiful bathroom to make sure that's... Chad, congratulations on the call. With Chad's promotion, opened up his old job as sergeant. You are next, our next sergeant. My favorite name to say, Florencio Garcia. It's a fun name to say. And more importantly, Flo is a fantastic person who has an infectious laugh that resonates throughout the entire Police Department. My partner Megan can contest, we know it's 2 o'clock every afternoon towards the midship. When we hear that, lovingly, I'll call it a cackle, echo through the halls. He brings a lightness and a happiness to our team that's much appreciated. And I'm very, very grateful for Flo taking this next step and the responsibility that comes with it. You and us were discussing, it struck me that this is, Flo's promotion is kind of monumental for us because it is the next level of leadership generation in our department. We will be on the leading edge of the next generation of leaders. Many of our promotions that we've introduced to you in the past several years have been people who've been over a decade at the department and put their time in and moving through. And Flo is on that leading spearhead of that next generation. So we look forward to someday Flo and his partners running our department and keeping our city safe. Supposed to talk more about you, Flo, but 2018, he joined us after a four-year stint at the National Guard while receiving his four-year degree from Parkside. He's a top-notch field training officer, as Chad was. Flo is the person that Captain Mullinger and I look to when we're having something that needs a little bit of a more gentle but firm guidance and making sure that they stay, get every opportunity under our team. Flo's the person that we look, we're gonna miss that from the FTO standpoint, but are probably gonna be hard helping them through that on the start of the time. I could go on and on. Happy Flo's husband, Ty, come and pin his badge.
Yeah, let's read the door, please, Mayor.
Just hold that thought. He's very excited. If you raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Florencio Garcia.
Having been appointed
Having been appointed.
To Sergeant of Police.
To Sergeant of Police.
In the City of West Bend, Washington County.
In the City of West Bend, Washington County.
Swear that I will support
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Of said office
Of said office.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Flo, we're gonna do a sign to make this official. Also excited tonight, celebrating.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations to two of the finest in our department. We're gonna move on to our consent agenda tonight. Items 3 through 10 were just taken up in committee, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our first item for consideration tonight, Jacob is going to present the Smile West Bend Community Action Plan.
Hello. Let everybody clear out. I come up to the podium and everybody leaves.
We can wait just a second, Jacob.
About a year ago, I came before the council to talk about the beginning of our journey as an age-friendly community through AARP. Since then, we have formed and kind of really grown the Smile Committee. And the big step we took in the last couple of months was developing our Age Friendly Community Action Plan. This is a requirement as part of the Age Friendly Network through AARP to create a five-year action plan. We selected three domains of emphasis, and we'll get into those in a little bit. First of all, Smile stands for Supporting Multigenerational Inclusive Living Environments. It is a collection of about 15 community advocates and volunteers from different organizations, specifically geared towards older adults and seniors. But really, this is age-friendly. It's about people of all ages. So we don't wanna get just the idea that it's for people in the retirement age or anything like that. We are trying to make West Bend more friendly to all residents. And so as I mentioned before, we joined the network in June of 2023. Our mission is to create a welcoming, inclusive, and empowering community for people of all ages and to help them participate in a healthy, safe, accessible, and thriving community. And so the big push that YARP has founded this network of communities nationwide is West Bend and the country has seen an increase in the age of its population. The two bar charts down there, if you look at the 60 to 79 age range, it's gone from 13.4% of the population in 2010 all the way up to 20.1 in 2022. And that's a trend that is not expected to slow down. So we wanna make sure that we have, not that this is a problem, but just that we have the resources and the opportunities for people as the population demographics shift. I was actually working on a West Bend document this morning and had to update the median age, and it's already gone up a year in the last year. So that trend is, we see it here, we see it across the country. And so we wanna make sure that we are continuing to provide support for our residents. So in order to do that, last fall, our committee conducted a community survey of West Bend residents. Almost 400. We focused on those 50 and older. It was a very comprehensive survey, so thank you to everyone who filled it out. And then we used that survey. That was the biggest piece of information and data we used in order to create the action plan. So on the right there, just some highlights from what we discovered. If you are curious to learn more about the survey, there's a full report that I can pass along to you. It's also on our website. So 65% of our residents surveyed consider it important to continue living in West Bend for as long as possible. But the, over 20% feel left out or lacking companionship on a regular basis. People really do enjoy our parks and our recreation offerings. 60% said they rate them as good, very good or excellent. But then 50% of our residents rate the transportation offerings. That's what the one that's cut off is, poor or fair. So that's definitely an opportunity for growth and one that we will be looking at in the coming slides. So in the action plan, we chose three domains. That's pretty much the standard for other communities. The ones that we chose were communication, transportation, and health and wellness. And then we submitted that plan a couple of weeks ago to the AARP National Office. I actually got the email this afternoon that said that it's approved on their end. So that was exciting to see. And then with these three domains, we divided our committee into subcommittees so we can really focus on those three domains. And then again, the full action plan is in your packet. This is just kind of an overview of what we are going to be focusing on over the next five years. So the first one is communication. We really wanna reach all residents. We know that some of the channels that the city uses and other channels that have become more mainstream often leave certain residents and demographics out. Not everybody has access to the internet at home. Not everybody feels comfortable using social media. So we wanna make sure in addition to those platforms that we have opportunities to reach people where they are. So either through print or in person through there. And also to those who can't leave their home. That was something that came up in our survey collection that we only were able to reach the people that we could find, the people that maybe need the most help or the people that need, are lacking the most or the ones that aren't able to leave their home or aren't as willing to leave their homes. So we wanna make sure that that is a piece of that. So we wanna make sure that that is a piece of that. We are working, one of our action items on that is to revive the Connection Boxes Program through Aurora. They did some care packages to homebound residents in the past, and we're going to be working with Amy Hackman from Aurora to hopefully revive that. And then also, 211 Connect is a great resource that they have found is not as well-known or used in our community as it could be. So growing the awareness of 211 is a hotline people can call to find resources for mental health, physical health, anything like that. So we wanna make sure that our residents are aware of that offering and how to use that and what they can find so they aren't missing out on opportunities that way. The second one is transportation. We wanted to make sure transportation is more than just car transportation, driving yourselves. A lot of older residents can't drive themselves or don't like to drive themselves anymore. So we wanted to make sure that, we looked at the gap in rideshare availability and demand in West Bend, both through the taxi programs at the city and county level and also rideshare programs through interfaith caregivers and other organizations. We also wanted to make sure we encourage pedestrian safety and make it a safe place to walk, bike, enjoy the trails and sidewalks that we have, and look for safer signings and markings at high-traffic intersections to just help make everyone feel safe and able to access where they need to go. Final domain is health and wellness. We wanted to make sure we are continuing to provide public and accessible healthcare resources and checks. Amy, again, from Aurora, does a lot of blood pressure screenings and other screenings at the farmer's market, at the library, and things like that. We wanna continue to support that and grow those opportunities. And then encourage seniors and caregivers to create a personal action plan so that they're ready in the case of an emergency or severe circumstances, that they know what to do and how to address anything that might come and be prepared. And then, the Senior Center, last year opened up the Fun and Fit Games for 50-plusers, which is a great event to get people active and involved, and we wanna continue to support that and other senior wellness events. That is all that I had on my slides. Does anybody have any questions? I'd be happy to answer them further.
Thank you very much, Jacob. Do you need action on this tonight, that it was presented in front of council?
One piece of our submitting to the AARP was to get council approval. So if, that would be a piece that if we could do today.
You bet. Before we do that, I've just gotta make sure the council understands Jacob has really taken this program and run with it. There's a big council that's involved in this, that Jacob spearheads, plans all the meetings, and puts it all together, and he's done one heck of a job. Great presentation tonight. So we'll seek approval tonight on this action plan. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Schmidt. Okay. Any comments, questions, discussion for Jacob? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Great, thank you very much, Jacob. We've got a change on our Dear Management Committee, and Chief's walking up to the podium so he can tell us about that.
Very quick. Lieutenant Scheringer used to be our delegate for the Dear Management Committee as the leader of our nuisance abatement program. Happy to report Brian is enjoying retirement, retired in July. And so Sergeant Robert Schatzko is now leading out our nuisance abatement program, and I'd like to recommend he take Lieutenant Scheringer's place on the Dear Management Committee.
Great, thank you, Chief. I support that change on that committee as well, Chief. And I talked about it a couple of weeks ago, and so recommendation is to replace Sergeant Schatzko with, on the Dear Management Committee, taking the place of a retirement from Scheringer. Thank you, Alderman Sparts, and second by Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Acquisition offers from Wisconsin DOT curb ramp projects throughout the community. Max.
Thank you. Wisconsin Department of Transportation has a project to improve curb ramps along select in high rates in the city of West Bend. Washington Street from the east end to the west end within the city limits, as well as Main Street Barton Avenue, all the way up to Skyline, from Washington to Skyline. So they are improving the curb ramps to bring them up to the federal ADA standards. And as part of this project, they need to purchase some land rights, sometimes temporary limitedisments, which allows them to grade behind the sidewalk in areas where they're gonna change the elevations. And in the case, in this case, there are eight properties that are owned by the city where they are seeking temporary limitedisment, and one of them, they are seeking about 1,200 square feet of right-of-way. So they did a study, a market study of land sales within the areas to determine the value of the land. And based on their process, they were allowed to make offers not based on appraisals, but based on that study. It's typical of this type of projects they do. The eight properties are listed in the memo with the value that they estimated and the actual offer they're making for these pieces of land. We reviewed those, and they seemed to align with other projects that we did where we had land acquisition. So we would recommend, the city would accept the offers, in which case, then we would have all the paperwork to the clerk to be signed by city officials, and then they can move along with their projects.
If you may, if you have questions.
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderwoman Sizer. Any more comments, questions, discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our reports tonight. Our first report is the Parks and Rec Commission meeting on 8/15/24.
August 15th, busy meeting. We met at 4 o'clock for tours of the parks and some updates. We started with the swim pond, looked at the new inflatable's. The target goal this year was 2,080 users. Actually, there were 3,700 as of August 12th, so it definitely drew people in. Net sales at that time were 92,000 compared to last year at that time, 60,000. So it did very well this year. They're talking about the inflatable expansion for next year, roughly 160,000 for the inflatable's, plus they do need to dredge the pond and purchase life jackets. So they're seeking donations for that. The Lac L'Oréal Nature Playground was our next stop on our little vans. 75% of that is paid for by donations to date. Hopefully, they'll have that open by spring. We then went out to Wingate Playground. That's 30 years old, and they moved up the schedule for that to next year for a rebuild because it needs extensive work and needs to be made ADA compliant. Roughly, it's going to be about 130,000 to redo it. They do have a $50,000 grant, which will help with that. The next stop was Villa Park. That has been rebuilt and improved this year. Great deal of local resident participation, which is wonderful. That's the way a true neighborhood really should be. Lot of neighbors pitching in and helping with everything. It's beautiful. The final stop was Regner Park. We talked about two potential handicap parking spots at the labyrinth, and they'll be doing the final phase of the interior of the camp lodge. They also gave an update on the Gears Bike Trails, which were approved and developed earlier this year. Very popular and very well-used. Then we moved into the regular meeting at 6:30. We discussed, or they discussed, the capital budget for next year and the five-year budget. Lists were provided with estimated costs for improvement and repairs to equipment and park amenities. Priorities generally fall into two general areas. One, operational needs, such as replacing a 25-year-old mower and placing security cameras at several locations, like the downtown Riverwalk, Regner Park, Riverside Pavilion. The other priority, of course, is residents' needs. That includes rebuilding Wingate, street tree planting after roadwork, and completing camp lodge. And there's a need to consistently review and prioritize those needs because that changes. There are a lot more projects they're thinking about, and they'll be soliciting donations and other funding sources. Things like the inflatable's, the nature playground, skate park, Regner entrance arch they talked about, and maybe an all-abilities playground. But they're looking for donations and other sources for those. Finally, it ended with reports from various staff members and a huge thank you for everything they do. This year, there was a successful Villa Park project, a great effort on the downtown planters and baskets. They added the ID informational tags to trees along the river and at Regner. They handle never-ending calls from residents, scheduling in fall classes, handling rental facilities, and by the way, those continue to be very popular. Beach House and Riverview are booked solid, and they had eight weddings at Lac L'Oréal last year. They have 10 already booked for this year. So, and again, they thank the staff for all the never-ending summer work on our park system. So that was it.
Very good. Thank you, Alderwoman Sizer. Library Board meeting, August 20th.
Oh, boy, now we're going. Cool. The last meeting of the Library Board was held on August 20th. I bet you can't guess how the meeting started. Oh, yeah, okay. Pledge of Allegiance, approval of the consent agenda, and financial reports. Come on, guys, it happens that way every time, every meeting, okay? We did have one donation from the Madison Community Foundation. Thank you very much to them. The Library Director's Report focused on the bake sale that was going on in the library at the time of our meeting. I think Steve was trying to distract us from the topic at hand being budget, but he also brought up things like the staff reports that we get each month from the individual departments at the library and the things that they're doing. He also advised us that we are looking at RFID reader wand to help with inventory and check-ins. And then, of course, we got to the budget and it was still positive. The Board President spoke of the city's PTO proposal and what she knew and our need to take any approval after the city takes their action. Plus, we need to take action approving the library's budget before our next in-person meeting. So she reminded us of our electronic voting, our electronic meeting policy, and reminded us of the details of that. She also mentioned some items that would be discussed at a later time concerning a proposed nursing room at the library. Stay tuned. Agenda items for discussion centered on the budget, of course. We looked at the CIP for the next year and years to come, the five-year plan. We spoke of goals for the library and benchmarks for performance that's listed in the budget document, and of course, anxiously awaiting approval. So the next meeting of the Library Board is scheduled for the 17th of September.
Thank you, Alderman Burquist. Next meeting, Tourism Commission on August 21st.
We held a meeting on the 21st. We had four agendas, agenda items that we worked through. The first was a review of the Room Tax Financial Report. The second one, which was an exciting opportunity to hear from Hunnand Partners, we had engaged them, to do a market and financial feasibility and impact study of additional hotel and conference center located in the city of West Bend. And they came back with a recommendation of pursuing a 90 to 110 key hotel with an additional 12,000 square feet of conference meeting and ballroom space. So it's exciting to see that we are a community that is in need of such a facility. And I think for those on the committee, it did not come as a surprise, but having an outside group come in and validate kind of what we were thinking, based on what we're hearing about hotel room nights and the limit of available hotel rooms in the city of West Bend, we wanted to have that outside validation of that. So at this point, it's really in city staff's hands. They're initiating discussions with developers for a potential project at some point in the future. So that's exciting for the city of West Bend. We had a group, the Classic Green Reunion Event, presented by Sheila Everhart. They're gonna be hosting an event at the Washington County Fairgrounds on June 12th through the 14th of 2025. And if you aren't familiar with Classic Green, they are an organization that's gonna be drawing green tractor and collector enthusiasts from around the world to Washington County and the city of West Bend. I can't use the name, but if I say green tractor, you probably will all figure it out because they are, they are not associated with that entity from a brand standpoint. But coming up in June, you should see plenty of green tractors and enthusiasts here in Washington County. The last one was a report from Carissa Barnes regarding the Washington Fair County, Washington County Fair and Wisconsin State Fair sponsorships and booths, booths that they had this year promoting those, promoting the city of West Bend and driving people to visit the city of West Bend. And that was about the extent of the meeting.
Great. Thank you, Alderman Sternig. The Joint Review Board met last Tuesday morning, and the first part of an amendment to a project plan of a TID is to start with the Joint Review Board. And what was presented to us is an amendment to the plan of TID 16, which is commonly known as the Sand Drive TID. An amendment to the project plan would include extending the project plan of the TID from Decora to Indiana, or excuse me, from Decora to Kilborn to include a reconstruction of Indiana. And so, the gist of it is, the TID is doing quite well and is projected to do extremely well in the very near future, where we can, we first started by doing a reconstructive sand drive that is done, looks great, but now realizing that the TID is very, very successful and, like I said, will continue to be successful, why don't we knock out another road? And so, you can do that within a half a mile of the TID, as long as the project that you're doing impacts the TID, which it does. Ellers, our financial consultant, has confirmed that it does. So that was reviewed by the plan, or excuse me, the Joint Review Board. The next step is to have a public hearing on that, which happened that evening before the Plan Commission meeting. And then it was voted on and approved by the Plan Commission. The next step will, it will come in front of this council for approval, which will be on your agenda a week from now. And then it goes back to the Joint Review Board for their approval. After that, it then goes to the state for the state's approval. So that's kind of where that is at, and I believe we did talk about this a couple of weeks ago during a common council meeting. It was discussed. So anyway, what, kinda wanna let you know where that is at in the process. You will have a vote on it next week. In the meantime, if you have any questions, wanna see any of the financials, it's all been emailed. Well, I have it. I don't know if it's been emailed to everybody. It'll certainly be in your packet next week. If you wanna see it tonight, I've got a copy sitting on my desk. I know Matt's got a copy, Jay, of course, has a copy. So if you have any questions on it, please reach out and familiarize yourself with it because you'll be voting on it next week. Any questions in the meantime that we can talk about now? All right. If not, that was what the Joint Review Board met and talked about on the third. Plan Commission meeting on the third was that night? John?
Definitely. Guess how our meeting started? Pledge of Allegiance. We did have a public hearing, as the mayor said, and the, then we had consideration and possible action of the resolution approving the amendment to the project plan, and the Platten Commission approved that. So as the mayor said, I think he took some with thunder, but you'll be seeing that. So that worked well. We went into conditional use permits. We had a public hearing for use permit for sculpture within a flood fringe overlay district on zone lands located at 109 South Main Street on the west side of the river. That was by Mountain Outfitters. They wanna put a statue on the backside Riverside. They have a nice little plaza down there, so they're gonna decorate that up a little bit. We approved that. Well, we had the public hearing. And then we did do the action, okay? We had a public hearing on conditional use permit for food truck sales located at 1285 West Paradise Drive. That is the Vortex Pickleball Club. That's the backside of the Marshalls, the old Marshalls. They are doing a nice business over there and really being aggressive and working to make it a good sport complex, nice sport complex, and they're gonna supplement that with food truck. So we approved that. We approved the public, or had a public hearing and required an action on a conditional use permit for retail sales area as an accessory to warehousing distribution in a business district at 2800 East Progress Drive by Crane and Arrow. They are using that to supplement their store from downtown. It's their warehouse, and they do displays in their warehouse. So they're also doing retail out of there. So it wasn't a lot of traffic, but it was within the within the allowance. We had site plans we went into. We approved the exterior Meeker panel installation located at 303 Water Street, which is the volunteer center. They're doing artwork on the side of their building, and these were sculptures that decorated and supplemented the side of the building on the Eisenbahn, along the Eisenbahn where the new patio is. We did approval of architectural changes to the building at 111 North Main Street by TSR Property Management. That's the old Wyman Hotel, for those of people who've been around that long. It's, the backside of the building had some water damage to the Cream City brick, and they need to do an overlay on it. They're going to use copper paneling process on it. That'll help make that look real nice, and hopefully stop the water damage for them. So that wasn't a good thing. There's a new garage going to be built at 261 South Main Street by XSLLC. That's next to the old Riverhorse Saloon. And there's an old garage down there that's pretty dilapidated. They're going to redo that, make a nice seating deck on top. And there were some requests by department heads. That will be met, and the permit was granted for that. We approved a certified survey map for the existing Maricraft Building at 245 North Trenton Road. They are separating off a parcel, which had a driveway easement on it, and that's being done because that property was being purchased. As part of the purchase property, they wanted to remove the, they didn't need the driveway, so they removed it. I think there's more action being done by the buyer in the future, so we may see some more on that. And the final thing was, we annexed, or we approved the annexation of 65 acres located to, 65 acres to the city, which is located on Patricia Drive, North Patricia Drive and Green Tree Road and West of Main Street. This is a property across from Marine Park. They are looking to annex 65 acres and future development. And that was our meeting.
Any questions?
And we ended with it in German.
Yeah. Any questions for Alderman Sparts? City Administrator update?
Just share a couple of things. The negotiations are continuing with our three unions, the two in police and one in fire. We've had several meetings with fire and coupled in with the first group of police. They're going well. You guys will get a chance to review and ultimately ratify those agreements when the timing is right, when we come to agreement. But know that your police chief, fire chief, HR, and administrative staff members are working hard. We're joined by Alderman Sternig and the mayor at those meetings as well. And it's been a good, healthy exchange, and we're continuing to work towards the agreement that we can bring before you. I'll also share that an agreement with the county is in the works. The shared services for GIS is something that we've talked about on again, off again over the last couple of years with the county and with our GIS analysts departing to another organization. It gave us a renewed opportunity to have that conversation. We just had a meeting today with their head GIS individual, Eric Damcott. Some of you guys know him. He's been around with the county for a long time, really is a solid individual with GIS and Aaron Dahl. And then our team, John Fellows, is leading that conversation, and I joined in today. So I think we're probably close to being able to bring a resolution and agreement before council. Although, I guess, my understanding is, talking to Aaron, is the process, one or the other goes first. And I shared with them, it doesn't matter to me. So if the county takes action first, or if that's what they prefer, or if they prefer us to take action in advance, we'll get that to you. Feel free to talk about that in any more detail with John or myself, if you'd like. But we've been keeping the departments along the way, and they're helping us out in the interim. I should share that as well. We're really thankful that the county has been able to assist us with any higher-end GIS mapping that is needed. So we're thankful for that, and looking forward to the shared services agreement coming to fruition. Other than that, busy with budget meetings with the department heads, and looking forward to presenting that, not at the next meeting on the 16th, but shortly thereafter in October.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to any updates from the districts.
District one. I do know there is a steak fry down at Regner Park. I think it's the Kiwanis, New Kiwanis, that's doing it. But I thought it was, I don't remember if it was Wednesday or Thursday, but they've been advertising out there. So that's probably the last hurrah for Regner Park for this year, until December, when Christmas decorations are back up.
Alderman Allen?
As many of you know, I missed a couple of meetings. I was, to paraphrase the princess bride, I wasn't completely dead. Thanks, I was doing some volunteer work down in the city of Milwaukee and had a cardiac incident. Thanks to four bystanders who knew CPR, they were able to keep me alive until the fire department could take over and transport me to a hospital. I ended up getting a quadruple bypass and the whole slug of cath lab procedures. I am getting better every day. So, looking forward to joining you at some point. Probably not until October at this point.
Thanks for that, Mark. You look good. You sound good, and we're all pulling for you for a fast recovery and rehab. But thank you for calling us tonight. And of course, if you have any questions on anything we've discussed tonight or at our next meeting, feel free to reach out to Jay or myself. We're here for you, and of course, thinking and praying for you along the way, too.
I appreciate that. One other, the bid board tomorrow morning at 8:15 in the police training room will be holding its annual public meeting. This is an opportunity for stakeholders in the Downtown Business Improvement District to be heard by the entire bid board. And so it's a good meeting to attend if you're interested. I'll again be there remotely, but don't want to let it fall by the wayside.
Yep. Very good. Thank you. Alderman Burquist?
Just one thing. District three has about half of the district under road construction right now, so maintain vigilance and patience when driving the streets. South Main Street and Paradise, because construction adjusts every day, and lanes open, lanes close, and all that. So just pay attention to that, and again, remain calm.
Alderman Sternig?
I've got two things. One, in my district, if you haven't been by the area in a while off of Forge, it seems like we just broke ground not too long ago on Kettle Marine Metal Products, and there are walls, and it is coming together, and it's looking like a building. And I know that the Kiefers are extremely excited about the progress that's being made there. So if you don't get by that way, drive down that way. It's actually coming along really well. The second one, while not in my district, I did want to thank Chief Daring for the multi-agency response to a tactical situation yesterday. While not in my district, I heard from multiple residents in that area who are very, very close to it, who are extremely, extremely impressed, extremely impressed with the level of professionalism that you and the other, you, your team, and the other agencies had while on-site. In particular, calling attention to the level of detailed communication that went out to the citizens surrounding that area before and then after the event. Near and dear to my heart, it was five houses away from where I grew up and where my parents still live. So thank you to you, your team, and the other agencies who are involved in that situation and doing what you do, protecting and serving all involved, and keeping everybody during that time safe. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig. Alderman Sizer?
Yeah, they've been working on it a long time. It's finally ready. Charter Senior Living has a ribbon cutting Thursday, September 12th at 3:00 on Sand Drive. So everybody's welcome to come and see that. It's being followed with a reception at the bend, and that's at 4:30. So you can go to the bend, see the reception, meet the team, network, learn more about it. So we're excited. That's finally ready to go, and ribbon cutting is Thursday. So we're excited about that.
Great. Thank you, Alderman Sparts. Anything tonight?
The only thing I noticed is AT&amp;T has finished up the fiber, I'm sorry, the fiber optic, fiber optic project in my neighborhood has finished up, and they have followed through with the remediation afterwards. So anybody that has the project going through the area, give them time, and they'll get to it.
Thank you. Alderman Schmidt, anything tonight?
We've got a couple of new businesses up in our area that are, one is open, and one is going to be open soon. Speaking of Indulge Salon, which accommodates nine stylists, they have three in there now, a fourth one coming. And they're probably going to have a ribbon cutting, but that's in the works. And then the other, the second one is the Bank of Newburgh, which is looking really good. And they hope to be in there in the fall, or possibly early winter, and probably a ribbon cutting in the spring, when it starts warming up again.
Great. Alderman Zingshaim?
Mentioned earlier, Villa Park Playground, ribbon cutting was a couple of weeks ago. It was as advertised. It was, there's a lot of people there. And it was really cool to see a lot of people from Villa Park come, take part in putting the park up, being there for, you know, the dedication of it, and it'll definitely be well-used.
Great. Thank you. My only update tonight on Wednesday, Wednesday is September 11th, and at 9:00 in the Veterans Plaza outside of the Tower Heritage Center, there's a West Bend Remembers Ceremony at 9:00. I will be there and reading a proclamation at that and invite you all to come if you're available at 9:00 AM Wednesday here in West Bend. If not, at noon on September 11th, at the Wisconsin 9/11 Memorial on Kiwaskam, they are having their remembrance program. And so that'll be a neat event. As you all know, the Wisconsin 9/11 Memorial is right here in our backyard. So that program's at noon, the one here in West Bend's at 9:00. That's all on our agenda tonight. And just a reminder, a common council meeting a week from tonight. I will be out of town. I plan on being on the phone, but I will ask Alderman Butchlick to lead the meeting, and I'll just be listening in. But don't forget, a week from tonight is our next common council meeting. With no more business before the common council, I will adjourn. Thank you.